Okay, if councilors could take their seats, we'll get started. Okay. Yep. Thank you. Excuse me. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the December 5th meeting of the Barnstable Town Council. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting and if so, to please make your presence known. Obviously, the town is recording it and it will be available for replay and is also being broadcast and on the website. Madam Clerk, if you could do the roll, please.
Counselors. Bloom.
Here.
Burdick.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Leveque.
Here.
Mendez. Oops, I'm sorry, Lutke.
Here.
Mendez.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Penn.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Tamish.
Here.
Turkelson.
Here.
We have a full boat, 13.
Just for the record, I wanted noted that President Penn and Counselor Starr are participating via Zoom, so we welcome them both here. Also, I just want everyone to be aware that we are having an executive session immediately after the moment of silence, and we will resume the public meeting after the executive session. And we'll have a motion and a vote on that shortly. So Chris, Counselor Clark, would you like to proceed with the...
Thank you very much, Vice President Tamish. Today, I would like to welcome Captain Greg Ketchin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Captain Ketchin is a retired U.S. Coast Guard captain living in Osterville, Massachusetts. He is a volunteer at the Coast Guard Heritage Museum located at Barnstable's Old Customs House and has served as its president for the past six years. Before moving to the Cape 13 years ago, Greg's career included providing support to Massachusetts' commercial ports as a development consultant, heading operations at the New England Aquarium, and filling a wide variety of Coast Guard jobs. These included performing duties at the Coast Guard Headquarters in Washington, completing assignments as chief oceanographer for the International Ice Patrol and on the faculty of the Coast Guard Academy, and serving as commander of Coast Guard Group Boston and a NATO station in Italy. He has completed graduate studies in both physical oceanography and business administration. He's a frequent lecturer on a variety of topics related to Coast Guard missions and history. Captain Ketchin, please join us.
You can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence?
Did you want to do your...
Want to do that first?
Sure.
Okay. I'm just, sorry, it's trying to make up, it'll take about 60 seconds. The Coast Guard Heritage Museum, I'm also representing, I frankly congratulate you for getting veterans in here periodically. It's an honor. It's an honor for me to be a veteran. I represent another about 40 to 50 veterans that serve as volunteers at this Coast Guard museum, which is in our town. It's over in Barnstable Village, for those that haven't been there, please join us for that. These people are dedicated to telling the Coast Guard story and the Barnstable story, frankly. The museum there is in the Old Customs House, as many of you are aware. But I wanted to spend just a second to talk about another initiative. We just today or tomorrow, I'm not sure it occurred today, are awarding a major contract to a world-renowned, one of the best marine maritime artists in the world, will be doing a large painting for us that will be permanently installed in the State House in Boston next fall, large by, meaning eight feet by eight feet, and it will be, I think probably November it will be installed there. This will commemorate Massachusetts as the birthplace of the Coast Guard, 18th century birthplace of the Coast Guard. So it's exciting for us. This will be a significant piece of art when it's installed, and we're excited to have the Coast Guard on display. There'll be about 100,000 people a year that will go buy this piece of art in the State House.
Thank you for that. And thank you for your service. If we could now have a moment of silence for those that are near and dear to us and those who have served their country? Thank you. At this point, I move to go into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property since a discussion, open session, may have a detrimental effect on the negotiated position of the town and town council. Identifying the property in question would compromise the purpose for which the executive session is being held, and therefore, that information is being withheld. The town council will not return, excuse me, will, will. I'm reading from last meeting's text, and I've been, I was warned to take the nod out, and I just kept right on reading. The town council will return to public session after the executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Excuse me, Vice President Tamish. I need to recuse myself. Thank you, sir.
With the record note that Counselor Leveque is leaving the dais. Thank you. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Counselor Mendez?
Yeah, thank you, Vice President Tamish. I don't have an issue discussing this, but I don't see why we need to go into executive session. This has to go through a first read, a second read, and I think the public deserves to know what and why we're thinking about spending this money. So I don't, I won't vote to go into executive session, but I'm more than willing to discuss it in public.
Okay. Any other discussion? Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I agree with Counselor Mendez, and I did vote no last meeting, and I will vote no this meeting because I believe that at this point in time, this matter can be discussed in public.
Any further discussion? Counselor Lutke?
I'd just like further explanation. Why, why do you say at this point in time? What has happened? I'm not aware of anything that's happened. Are you aware of some information, Counselor Schnep? I don't know what you mean by that.
I'll take my first shot at it. The property in question was discussed at the last executive session that we had, and the reasons put forth for being an executive session no longer seem to be applicable, in my opinion. So I think that it could be discussed in public. And as we discussed quite lengthily last meeting about when the council can choose to go into executive session, there are 10 items that the state allows you to, but you don't have to. You don't have to vote. We're, we're taking a vote, and so my vote will be no.
Counselor Lutke?
Could I ask Andy Clyburn to come up and tell us if he's aware of some change that would cause us not to have to be in the executive session?
Mr. Clyburn.
Good evening, town councilors. Andy Clyburn, Assistant Town Manager. When we went into executive session, I was given clear direction, and I executed what that direction was, and I have heard nothing, have had no further communication on the matter.
Thank you. Counselor Lutke?
I think that clarifies it to me that there's been no change because Mr. Clyburn, to me, was very clear in the executive session, and he has heard no change. So I think it does have to be discussed in executive session.
Counselor Mendez?
Let's call this what it is, okay? This isn't legal strategy. It's not negotiating strategy. This is to buy a piece of property. That's what this is. And the public deserves to know the rationale for the people who want to buy this property. We're going to go into executive session and talk about buying a piece of property. It's not going to hurt our negotiating.
No.
Excuse me? Oh, so, like I said, in my opinion, it's not going to hurt the town's negotiating or leverage or anything like that. I think people deserve to know what we're doing and why we're doing it, and I think they deserve to hear, they deserve to know and hear the full conversation, not just what people pick and choose to say. This isn't legal strategy. This is a negotiation for a piece of property. That's what this is, with the people's money. So they deserve to know why, what the rationale is for or against it. That's what I believe.
President Penn, did you have a comment?
I certainly did. This discussion is not about purchasing a piece of property. This discussion is about expending some public funds to do diligence on the condition of a piece of property. In addition, the whole reason for going into executive session is to protect the local businesses that may or may not be connected to this piece of property. So I can't think of any better reason to go into executive session. It's not to discuss whether to purchase the property or not. You're wrong. It's to discuss whether we should spend, expend up to a certain amount of money to do diligence and then decide, depending on what that information gives us, what our next steps would be. Do we want to go forward? Don't we want to go forward? Come on, guys, this is local businesses that we're affecting, and if you owned it, you wouldn't want it discussed in, open at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neary?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. Kind of hit it on the head, ultimately, we're spending taxpayers' money. And however it washes out, they really have a right to know what we're spending the money on. They do. And whether it's discovery, it just seems that we're doing possibly maybe a next buyer's footwork to do this discovery. I just, I don't see the purpose of, A, another executive session, which we've been lambasted over the last five meetings over, and it, the optic is it's all behind closed doors. It's just, I just don't find it appropriate, in my opinion.
Thank you. Counselor Mendez?
Yeah, just a quick comment. The quote-unquote due diligence that we're doing is to see if it's worth buying this property. And as Counselor Neary said, as Counselor Schnep said, we're spending taxpayers' dollars. They deserve to know why and what we're doing due diligence on to buy this property. Like I said before, it's not my money, it's everybody's money. And we have a big sewer project going on, we have a lot of things going in town that we're expending dollars on. So I think it's only fair that we share with the public. If the people who were, who were selling this don't want it out there in the ether, then don't offer it to the town.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I do very much value the people's money and take that very seriously, and perhaps the town attorney can explain the justification for the executive session. But executive session is to preserve the negotiating power when discussing real estate, and I think it's very applicable at this stage. If we choose not to go forward, that's fine. If we choose to go forward with these, with this investigation in preparation to consider a purchase, then I think it's all justified to do so in executive session and to support the evaluation. We're not at the purchase stage, we're at the evaluation, and I support what the town staff has recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone am I right? Counselor Mendez?
So if this money is approved to do due diligence, does it have to have a first and a second read? Karen, does it have to have a first and a second read?
Good evening, councilors. Karen Ober, town attorney. In this case, I don't know that it requires a first and a second read. I believe, and maybe, I don't know if Mark Millen is on the, on the meeting tonight, but I believe these are monies that the property asset management department has to do this kind of work. So I don't think there would be a separate appropriation for this, for this due diligence. And I did want to also say, the rationale to go into executive session is to consider the purchase, lease, or value of real property. So that is the justification under the open meeting law. It doesn't mean you're taking a vote to buy it in exec, which you would do in public. It is just the first step in that process. So the, the rationale under the open meeting law does apply, but to Counselor Schnep's point, it is discretionary. You do not have to go into executive session. This is something that is available to you because the feeling is, in many of these circumstances, and I think the thinking was this was one of them, it would provide a better negotiating position for the town. So again, it's your choice whether to do it. Legally, you can, you don't have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ells?
Good evening, Mark Ells, Town Manager. Thank you. Relevant to funding? It'll depend on the funding source. The funding source that was referenced, the asset management, was a funding source that at this point has not been appropriated. It'll be before you next meeting. It's the, not specific to this project, but more generally, the one where we provided four different options that you might exercise as we move forward with that. And just so you all remember, that was an asset management fund that was created and requested by the town council back when we had sold properties. I just wanted to share that with you. So it will depend on the source. If it's a new appropriation from cash reserves, it takes two readings. If that asset management was in place, it would take no action whatsoever, but we would look for town council to direct us to move that way, but because that isn't in place. If it were another funding source, like, I don't want to speculate, but there are funding sources, your reserve that you have, 250,000, it would take one vote. So again, but we haven't gotten to that point. We're still discussing whether to do, the word discovery was used, the, you know, to look into whether this has merit to proceed with. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Counselor Starr?
Thank you, President Tamish. My thought is that we met in executive session at the last meeting, we voted eight to three, we considered this, we voted not to pursue it. If somebody could explain if there is new information available, what, what has changed? We took a good look at it and decided, eight to three, not to pursue it. So I'm, if somebody can explain to me that there's new, new information, then I will move forward with the discussion, but not until then. Thank you.
Thank you. John, did you want to address that? President Penn, if you could unmute, please?
There we go.
There you go. Thank you.
To answer your question, the new information is called vision. It's my understanding, I was not present for that meeting, but it's my understanding that there was absolutely no vision presented at that meeting for this particular property. So that's new information. And being the counselor that represents this location and not being present, I basically asked if the town council would consider, reconsider, because you were not discussing whether to buy and purchase the property. I mean, this is very surprising to me. We're discussing whether to expend less than $35,000 out of a over $200 million budget that we have. So we're not talking about serious dollars here. I mean, yes, it's money and it's public funds, but we're discussing whether to figure out whether this property is, has a value for us. And that was not discussed last time. What was discussed last time was whether you should buy it or not, and that is not the question on the table at this stage. Got way ahead of the issue. So let's just take baby steps, one at a time. Vote to do due diligence, which is what the appropriate thing to do for taxpayer money if you're so concerned about taxpayer money, that is the, the right thing to do, rather than just cut it off at the knees without even finding out the answer to the questions. That's just ignorance. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I think a discussion on vision would be a very positive conversation for the council to have, whether it's about our Hyannis Harbor or other parts of our community. But I'm wondering if we're veering outside of the purpose of executive session, if the primary purpose is to talk about the vision of a particular part of our community. And that might have, you know, been lent as a persuasive argument at the time of our last vote, but I'm not sure it constitutes new information that we need to discuss tonight.
Thank you. Any further? Counselor Mendez?
We did talk about due diligence, but facing the fact of the cost and the future cost made it cost prohibitive to do due diligence. You don't want to spend tens of thousands of dollars for something that's going to cost us tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars. Like I said, we have a lot of things going on in this town that we're responsible for. I don't take it, $35,000 is a lot of money to me, but from what we were told, it wasn't 35,000. It could have been up to 50,000, if not more. So we talked about due diligence, but along with due diligence, you have to look at the future cost of the project, see if it's cost prohibitive. And what we were faced with and what we were told, this thing is going to be tens of millions of dollars, and that is a small estimate. It could be up over $100 million by the time it's all said and done. So I don't see the sense of spending $500 if it's going to cost us $50 million in the back end. It's taxpayer money. We have a new school that needs to be built. We have a sewer project that's going on. Every thousand dollars counts, and I don't look at $35,000 like it's nothing. I don't care how much money's in the bank. We can spend our money in better places, in my opinion. And if you want to discuss it in public, that's fine, because the public deserves to know.
Thank you. Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. Andy, specifically, the owner of the property asked us to keep, keep this private and confidential. Is that, that could just be my interpretation of what was presented to us? I just want a clarification on that.
That's correct. It was made clear that the confidentiality could only last to a certain point. If we decide to acquire a piece of property, there are going to be multiple steps at town council, in public, including public hearings, and then more planning and public input for the future, whatever we end up, end up doing with that property. The intent was, before, to Counselor Mendez's point, we spent a lot of public funds, we needed to get direction from the town council. We wanted to do that in an executive session, and if there was not an appetite to move forward, we were going, we would inform the seller that there wasn't, which is the direction, clear direction I was given in that executive session, and I went and called immediately after and explained that the vote was taken and the votes were not there to move forward. So as of now, nothing has changed. If the council reconsiders and I'm given a different direction, I'll execute it.
Thank you. Counselor Bloom?
Do you think that there will be some vision with regard to this property presented in, in executive session?
Well, I do not know the nexus of going back into the executive session, counselor. I know that there was considerable effort given in the previous executive session. There were a number of directors present to answer any and all questions, and to be honest with you, when you talk about vision, it's a bit of the chicken and the egg with a property such as this, because you really need public input to do the proper process. And it's very difficult, given that you have a potential seller that does not want to go public if we are not interested. So I don't know what additional information President Penn wanted to, you know, it was unfortunate that she was not able to join us, but I felt like Director Comfort and our town engineer and others did a fairly good job of presenting the information that we have to date. And our intent was always, if we got direction, that we would be back, and if we were going to spend money, that we would be back. I mean, we can't go purchase a property without two-thirds votes of the town council.
Thank you. Sure. Seeing no further discussion, Counselor... Okay. Seeing no further discussion, Counselor Starr.
Thank you. Sorry. My comment is, I'm wondering if either David Anthony or somebody has done a new financial look at this property to find out what the potential income is over the long run and what the payback would be. Has anybody put any numbers? We didn't have any numbers particularly last time. I'm wondering if that has happened at all. Thank you.
Would you like me to respond?
Yes, sir.
Staff has not done any further diligence. We took the direction given to us and we executed it. And nothing is going to be done until we get different direction. And I think that would require that vote being rescinded and a different vote taken.
Correct.
And we're happy to do so. But as of now, we have followed your direction.
Thank you.
Yep.
President Penn.
I just want to say, you're way ahead. You're talking about a different issue. I don't understand why. Just talk about the here and now, the first step. Of course, he hasn't done an analysis. He doesn't know the use of the property. Nobody does. Why would you ask that at this point, at this stage? It makes no sense. So why don't we just discuss what's on the table and leave the future to the future? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. As we are in a hybrid session with Zoom participants, all votes have to be roll call votes. Okay? So the motion before us is to go into executive session, as the motion stated, to discuss the property question. Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Bloom.
Yes.
No.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Lutke.
Yes.
Mendez.
No.
Neary.
No, thank you.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
No.
Starr.
No.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Seven yes. Five no.
Okay, we will adjourn to the Selectment Conference Room for an executive session. We will return to the public meeting.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to resume the public meeting. To making sure we have a quorum present. We do. We will resume the public meeting and it is now time for public comment. So I would like to invite any members of the public who wish to speak to come forward and thank you for your patience while we have that other session. Any public comment? Is this a first? Lynn, do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay, well, thank you. Seeing no one for public comment, I don't see a need to go to council response to public comment. So we will go to Town Manager Communications. Town Managers' communications are pre-recorded and available on video on demand on the town website. And just to hit some of the highlights on that, there is a budget calendar update. A notice that the property values have been approved by the DOR, allowing the town council to vote on the tax levy shifting options at today's meeting. The Town Manager Fee Hearing for calendar year. Twenty-six fees were held on November 12th. Public comment accepted until December 11th. Town Manager discussed various means of communications with the town. He also provided an update on the Cape and Islands Bridges Coalition. And there was an update on the housing report by Planning and Development Director Jim Kupfer, who, if you do get a chance to read that, I think there were 162 slides included with that. And it is everything and anything you want to know about multiple family housing in the town of Barnstable, past, present, and future. And I thank Jim for that. Okay, any questions on Town Manager comment?
He's trying to come back in.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilor Turkelson? Councilor Lutke?
No, I just wanted to say that Jim Kupfer's presentation is magnificent. The way he grouped it, it's so logical, it's so clear, the way he went through every project, absolutely amazing. I would urge members of the public who haven't looked at it, watch that video. It's such a clear picture of what we've done with housing. I'm on the Housing Subcommittee. And what an impressive piece of work, Jim. You're to be complimented, first rate. Thank you.
Councilor Turkelson?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I have a question for the assessor and maybe Town Manager Mark Milne. I'm not exactly sure who will answer this, but I received a question from a resident we had met earlier last year about assessing issues when we had the whole assessing error. And one of the things that we discussed was that taxpayers historically haven't found out the new assessed values until they get their tax bills, which makes it-- Sorry?
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate spot for that question.
Okay, all right, all right. Todd?
We have communications at which point you can-- Thank you. Councilor Schnep?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I want to echo Councilor Lutke's comments about the multi-family housing report. I confess I haven't gotten through it all, so I probably will have some questions in the future, but it's impressive in terms of the amount of housing that we have been creating. And again, I think it may be worthy of further discussion from the dais at some point in the future. I did have a quick question for the Town Manager. You had mentioned that you had attended the Cape and Islands Bridge Coalition, and then there was also reference to the Transportation Improvement Plan. Do you imagine or envision that there could be any reduction in some of the monies we receive for regular Cape Cod projects because there's money being allocated for the bridges? Or is that not a zero-sum game?
Good evening, Mark Ellis, Town Manager. Thank you for the question. I'd have to go back and look at the sources of the funding. I do believe it's not coming from the seven-plus-or-minus million that we see every year come in from the federal transportation. It's called, just real quickly, you all actually. Felicia, you are the Town of Barnstable's representative on the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And the Cape Cod Commission is the-- they administer this and work with both the federal, state, and then various designees on this Metropolitan Planning Organization. Past President Leveque delegated the authority to Dan Santos. Prior to that, I had served for about 15 years on the MPO for various leaders of the town council. Dan does an outstanding job for us. So every year, they plan for how various funds are going to be used. You'll also see money for the airport and other, all different parts of money. The dollar amount that's in this amendment is $365,400,000. I believe it's a separate part of money. But I will go back and ask the question and I will share the answer with the council because obviously the Bridges project is projected to be well over $4 billion. I pointed out that specific amendment to the tip for two reasons. First, it gave me the opportunity to let Felicia and Craig know that, you know, our people are on top of this. But certainly, they look to the leadership, whoever that is, of the town council, and actually, the president is the one that's designated. But secondly, that we need to have a letter in by the ninth, or we need to have comment on the 16th. Now, Dan Santos will be there on the 16th, and he will make comment on our behalf, and he will comment affirmatively. I want to put together a letter to send out on Monday just to reinforce that. And so that the other people who are represented, not Dan, I know how Dan will proceed with this. The other people will know that Barnstable wants to see this money secured for those projects. I think at some point, it would be important to ask-- there's co-chairs for this Cape and Islands Bridges Committee that's been created. It's Paul Nedzwicki and Dan Wolf. At some point, I think you should have them in to brief you all. This is a significant project. These assets belong to the Corps of Engineers. We hear a lot about them. They are at the end of their useful life, both functionally and, you know, structurally. Significant improvements have to be made. They're leaning toward replacement as opposed to significant rehabilitation. If you look at the timelines that go with one versus the other, believe it or not, it's a lot shorter to replace than to significantly repair by the schedules they've shown us. I'll close with this. We've heard a lot about almost $1 billion being designated for this out of, I believe it's bill funds. It was clear from the federal delegates, the staff of Warren, Markey, and Keating-- each of their staff for each were there. It was clear that though this money has been identified, it is not contracted. When people like, you know, I spent a lot of time in public works, until the money's secured in a contract, it's not secured. So I don't say that it's very optimistic, but don't take your eye off this ball. This is really important. And I think the leadership of the council should be briefed regularly, and Dan knows that, and Dan will do that. I, from my capacity on, you know, Cape and Islands Bridges Coalition, I will do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions of the Town Manager? Okay, thank you. Madam Cork, as you can see, Councilor Starr has returned. Thank you. Okay. I'm not going to have a presentation by the Massachusetts Institute of Technology regarding the outcomes of the stakeholder assessment for offshore renewable wind projects. That's going to be a Zoom presentation, and Lynn, are you coordinating that?
They are here. We have Archer Thomas and Iman Aziz.
Welcome, welcome, and thank you. The floor is yours.
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead, Archer, if you'd like. The floor is yours.
It'll be Iman who will--
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Town Councilors, esteemed attendees, online and in person. My name is Iman. I am one of the team working on the Renewable Energy Facility Clinic. This semester at MIT, we handled the New England Two Offshore Wind Project in Barnstable, specifically the onshore components. I'll be sharing some slides. Can you see my slides?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the team-- actually, the team this year was me, this semester was me, Iman, Aruni, Theresa, Archer, Ariel, and our TA, Sanjana, who spoke to you in the past presentation. In the semester, learning was a curve for us, and so is trust. And in light of that, we have prepared a brief that has probably been shared with you by now, as well as this presentation that we are publicly making. Our promise to you was, and is still and will always be confidentiality. All of the concerns have been voiced by the stakeholders. The stakeholders were never named. Everyone who voiced their concern, their concerns were channeled, they were written, but there was nothing in the report that pointed out to the names. Our second promise is neutrality. We remain committed to amplify the voices of the stakeholders. Our task is not to make a project happen or to stop a project from happening. Our process is a learning curve for us and for the people we are working with. Our job and our learning objectives revolve entirely around amplifying voices, creating a process that will satisfy your goals, anything else, through identifying your gains and addressing concerns. Our promise is, was, and will always be, to listen. And when we listen, we access our ignorance, and we channel your concerns rather than just think of answers, which is why in some of the interviews, I wasn't answering anything. And finally, our promise is to tailor solutions. We came as a clinic, and you heard the word mediate. Some of the stakeholders I spoke to very honestly told me, what are you going to mediate? This is not the time for us to mediate. And indeed, responding to the sentiment that we heard from this town, we didn't hold any session between you and other stakeholders, honoring your wishes and moving at your pace. We have heard concerns in our interviews. Some of them were unique, others were redundant. I would like to stress that the stakeholder assessment is not complete. Given the constraints of the elections period, some of the holidays, our class commitments, as well as challenge in connecting to some of the stakeholders, to date, these concerns are the ones that we gathered, but they are not a complete stakeholder assessment. These concerns can be generally grouped under these headlines. One is health and safety, and that includes what is not limited to EMF radiation, contamination of the water, fires related to the substation, also in relation to the underground cables. Climate and energy and environment, under those concerns, we heard people expressing that they would like to move on with renewable energy projects because they were worried about the climate, and they feel that renewable energy is the way for them to move forward. Another broad headline is the finances and the host community agreements. In that regard, we have heard expressed concerns about the form of a limited-- In that regard, we have heard expressed concerns about the form of a limited liability company, which is something that also was expressed in these interviews, and how a limited liability company can be holding such a big project, the change of the company's name. In addition to the host community agreements, some felt the process was not clear for them, some felt the results were not fair for them. The fourth concern was politics in general, related to the town of Barnstable, and in relation to the state, as well as the federal government, as well as the shape and depth of the previous community engagements that were done for these projects. Being who you want us to be, and this is what Sanjana said in the first presentation, when you asked her, what can you do for us? She said, we can be who you want us to be. But that is not always obvious. It's not as easy as it sounds. For that, we have put together a set of questions that we feel are the real takeaways for us here. These questions will help us, and probably you, define and shape not an offshore project, not a renewable project, but anything related to Barnstable. As individuals serving on the Town Council, what are the ground rules you want to set for any developer coming into the town of Barnstable? What kind and channel of communication would you want to enforce with that developer since day one? What should any developer coming into Barnstable know about this town? How would you define your town in relation to creating new projects? What are the goals or the objectives that you want to achieve together as individuals in the town and in the Town Council in relation to projects? And when I say projects, again, I am not talking about renewable energy only. There will always be emerging technology. There will always be new projects coming in. And we believe it's very important to define these questions. I'm not asking you for answers right now, but I'm thinking, these are the questions that we can start with to hand over to next semester. Thank you, and if you have any questions.
Any Councilor comment? Councilor Ludke?
Yes, thank you. I found those questions very good. I really liked that, the questions you left us with, really important in a broad sense. Because I think it's wise that you looked at this not in just the context of what it is, but in the larger context. So I appreciate that. What do you see next? Are you going to reach out to different stakeholders? You're going to continue with the same? What do you need from us in terms of moving your project forward? How can we help? And are you broadening? Are you narrowing? Are you going in certain directions that will come out with tangible results in buckets? The buckets you mentioned, the four areas? If you could just give a little bit of insight into that? Thank you.
Thank you for your question, and thank you for your comment. To answer your question, we'll be handing over this project to next semester's team. We'll be leaving the team with these connections and with these questions, as well as a list of stakeholders that we have prepared based on the current interviews that we did in the past two months. These stakeholders need to be interviewed, can need to be talked to, and probably other stakeholders too. Again, we were not, we cannot claim this is a comprehensive stakeholder assessment. We talked to a limited number of people, and there are many other stakeholders that can be identified. Homeowners in relationship to any utility, whether it's the substation, whether it's the cable, whether it's the beach, we have not been able to connect with everyone yet. So it's very important for the next team to be conducting these interviews with the list of stakeholders that we left, and probably others that they will identify. And that will also depend on the Town Council. How much of these questions do you think you want to answer? The clinic could definitely be of help in trying to help you answer the questions yourselves.
Thank you. Councilor Turkelson?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. Iman, I'm just curious, I know you're not going to divulge any names, but overall, the people that you reached out to, that you actually made a contact with, were most people receptive to talking to you?
I would say, there's always definitely, people usually are not very open to talking to new people or to strangers. But I found that the people at, especially at the Town of Barnstable, were very receptive. We did not find a lot of hurdles in talking to people. Some took a little bit of back and forth, but at the end, we talked to everyone who we reached out to.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Schnep, did you? Councilor Clark?
Thank you very much, Vice President Tamish, and thank you for your presentation. Do you anticipate the scope of this study to go into the following semester of fall, 2025? I know that there's a big expectation from the study that you're doing.
Thank you again for your question. We are recommending to move forward with this project. Again, the clinic is going to remain. This is a class that is part of the practicum requirements at MIT. The background of the students this work is very diverse, which makes this a very good learning experience and a diverse experience. Even when we're talking to the people, it's not only engineers. There's engineers, people who are planners, coming from different schools who are in this class. So we are going to hand over this project. The teaching team will remain the same. Our TA, Sanjana, is going to be the same. We're going to be around also in this department. So I'll be hanging out with the other team, handing them over everything properly. Whenever there's the need for us to stop in, we will. I definitely appreciate that there's a lot of expectations of this study, but again, the study is not one-way. It's not that we're coming to a community and writing our ideas. It's a learning experience for us. So a study is two-way. Again, it's working with you, what you want, how much you want to learn about yourselves as a Town Council and as a city, and what can be done for this city for any project. Again, it's not only offshore wind. The project can go through or cannot go through. This is not the issue. The issue is, there was a lot of controversies arising from this project, and some of them were a bit deep. So how can we avoid that for the future? How can Barnstable decide what it wants in regards to any project and create a process that can be replicated and modeled into other projects too?
Another question, please? If I may, thank you. If I may ask you, and actually, I should ask our staff, is there a link or a venue or an opportunity for Town of Barnstable residents to reach out to the MIT group? Communications Director Poyant, perhaps? You can answer that.
I have not received anything, so I think that if MIT were to share a link, we would find a place for it, but I have not received anything to date.
Thank you, I'm just trying to.
Yes, thank you. I will be sharing my email after this directly.
Thank you. It's more to facilitate a way for interested residents to reach out to you. And the other question I was going to put out there is, if you would, when this study is advanced, please note whether they are Town of Barnstable residents that are commenting or non-Town of Barnstable residents, because I can understand that we are elected by our residents, and I have our primary obligation to our residents. And not that I'm deaf to any other comment, but I would certainly place weight on those comments coming from Town of Barnstable residents. Thank you.
I understand your interest, and although we do not point names to stakeholders, but we group them, so there will be Barnstable residents and other stakeholders based on the descriptive technicality of who they represent.
Thank you. Any further questions? Discussion? No? Thank you very much for your presentation. Good job, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And also, it was an honor for us to meet the people in this town, and we look forward to working with you.
All right.
Hope you get a good grade.
Yeah.
I'm actually not graded in this class, so you can trust me on that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. The minutes. Act on the Public Session, minutes of November 21st. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
The second. Any discussion on the motion to accept the minutes? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Counselors.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Abstain.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Thank you. It's 11 yes, I mean 12 yes.
Thank you. Next item is communications from elected official boards, commissions, staff, correspondence. Councilor Schnep?
Vice President Tamish. Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I'd like to announce an opportunity to support the Mercens Mills Village Association Scholarship Fund. A week from this Saturday, the Panera Restaurant on I N O Avenue will be doing a little fundraiser on behalf of the scholarship fund. And 20% of the proceeds of anything that's purchased at the store, if you bring a coupon in, will go toward the MMVA Scholarship Fund. And to make it super, super easy, you can get a coupon on your phone by going to the Mercens Mills Village Association Facebook page and downloading that coupon there. So if that's December 14th, I don't think, it's all day, so if you're out shopping and you need a little snack, I would highly recommend stopping in at Panera's. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Leveque?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I just wanted to commend the Barnstable Youth Commission on the 11th Annual Community Substance Abuse Prevention Forum that took place at the Barnstable Adult Community Center this past Tuesday. I was able to attend, and it's a very informative event. They had Kevin Rosario, who used to work for Gosnold, is now a consultant, and did a great presentation for parents and the Youth Commission alike. And it was just a great event, and I encourage anybody next year to go. You really did miss out, there's a lot of great information. We have the in-plane site trailer that put on for the Barnstable Police, and also was a presentation from the school resource officers put on by Denny Stenfels. So just want to give, again, commend them and thank them for their hard work in regards to getting the word out in regards to substance abuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Neary?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. It's that time again, December 8th, that's Sunday from 3:00 to 6:00, the Centerville Civic Association will present and put on the annual Christmas Stroll. And it's a beloved celebration of Christmas friends, families, and neighbors in Centerville each year. And the residents of Main Street, they all work together to bring this event together. There'll be music, serenades, dance performers, crafts, and food, all free. And please, come on out. Hopefully, we'll get a little bit of maybe a white sprinkling of Christmas feeling. Additionally, if possible, if you can, participate, and they will have the availability of collecting donations to families in need in the Village of Centerville. Santa will be around as well, and he's created his own workshop where you can see his elves and greet him, and the kids will have fun. So please, Sunday, December 8th, 3:00 to 6:00, on Main Street in Centerville. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. Councilor Clark?
Also, on Sunday, December 8th, at 5:00, Santa will move from Centerville to West Barnstable to help light the Village Christmas tree on the Village Green. There'll be song sheets and pen lights to be used to help join the singing. And there, the group moves to the historic Meeting House, 1717 Meeting House, to hear about the Christmas story and see a live nativity, and refreshments are served afterwards in the Jenkins Hall. So that information can be seen on the West Barnstable Civic Association's website. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Crowe?
In the same vein, the Osville, 55th Annual Osville Christmas Stroll will be December 13th. There's a number of activities throughout the day, in the afternoon, and if there's any more information you need, I would suggest going to the Osville Business and Professional Association's website and check out the activities there. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Leveque?
I'm a little out of my territory, but I do want to mention, because I didn't see anybody else's hands up, that the Hyannis Stroll Weekend is this weekend. There's the Sippin' Shop that's happening Friday. There'll be the lighting of the boat over here on the Hyannis Green that's taking place starting at 5:30. And there'll be music provided by Ian Lee and some caroling. And then there'll be the Sippin' Shop of Destinations, where you can sip and shop, as it says. And then on Saturday, from 11:00 to 4:00, is the Hyannis Christmas Stroll, and there'll also be the Love Live Local Festival out here, and various entertainment that'll be up and down Main Street, lots of shopping opportunities, and Boat Parade and all that good stuff. So, and I believe, and I don't have it in front of me, but Riverview School is doing a concert. I think it's from 2:30 to 3:30, does anybody know on that exactly, over here at the Conference Center over here by the West End Rotary? So lots of festivities, and if you feel like touring around Barnstable. So, thank you.
Thank you. Am I right? Just to add a little bit, I think Councilor Neary was too modest to tell us that he and Councilor Turkelson and I will be manning the hot dog stand in front of the David Kelly House at the Centerville Stroll, and Councilor Leveque will be singing in that same general area, I believe. Yes, yes. We hope to see you there. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the orders of the day. Excuse me, Councilor Turkelson, did you want to ask your question? No? Okay, moving on to the orders of the day. Old Business, 2025-048. Councilor Mendez, that's an appointment. Would you read that one in, please?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Tamish. This is Old Business. Item number 2025-048 may be acted upon a majority vote. Appointments to a board, committee, commission. Register of voters. Thomas.
Chatrin.
327th Street, Hyannis, Mass., 02601. I'm sorry, I forgot my glasses.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, for a roll call vote.
Councilor Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
And thank you. It passes.
Thank you. 2025-050. Councilor Leveque, would you read that in, please?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. This is Old Business Public Hearing. Like to open that up. It's a majority vote. Item number 2125-050. It's allocation of tax levy fiscal year 2025, tax factor as written.
Second? Okay. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Where'd I leave off? Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Thank you.
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Passes, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, no, I was just going to welcome you and our assessing director, John Curran, and the floor is yours, sir.
Where'd I leave off? Mendez.
What are we doing?
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Thank you.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Passes, thank you.
Well, no, I was just going to welcome you and our assessing director, John Curran, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Counselors, for having me tonight. Thank you for having me here tonight, John Curran, Director of Assessing. I'm here to go over the presentation for the allocation of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five tax levy. The calculation of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five tax rate is basically a mathematical formula. The amount of money we have to raise is our tax levy. We divide that by the total assessed value of all of our property in town, and it comes up to that point zero zero six one. Multiply that by a thousand, that would be our fiscal twenty-five tax rate before we adopt any tax levy shifting options or exemptions. The allocation of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five tax levy by class, so as you can see, our residential class makes up a majority of our tax levy, then commercial, industrial, and personal property, round that out to get to the one hundred fifty, one hundred fifty-one million, one hundred thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollar amount that we want to raise for our tax levy this year. The town council, as, as nearly ninety percent of our taxable property is residential, there's a small monetary benefit to the residential class from any shift. As you can see on this diagram here, we have shifts from a single rate at the one-point-zero down to the max amount of shift of the one-point-five-zero. So the residential rate would decline about three, four percent for each shift illustrated here, while the commercial, industrial, and personal property rate would increase from thirty to thirty-one cents with each incremental shift right there. This is just a graph showing the split right there, where the blue line would be the residential. It has a slight trend down, and you can see it's a little more accelerated for the commercial going up when we, if we were to split the tax rate. Town council can authorize, now we're going to talk about the residential exemption end of this. The town council is allowed to authorize up to thirty-five percent exemption for Barnstable residents. The property must be their primary resident of the owner and used for their income tax filing purposes, and they must have owned the property on January first of the preceding year, so in this case, two thousand twenty-four. This option shifts the tax only within the residential class of taxpayers and does not change the levy amount itself or impact anything in the commercial, industrial, or personal property owners. Currently, there are eighteen communities out of three hundred and fifty-one in Massachusetts who have adopted a residential exemption. Barnstable originally adopted this in fiscal year two thousand and six. This option reduces the taxable assessed value for each qualifying primary residence. Barnstable has approximately eleven thousand four hundred ninety-seven qualified properties for this program. The results of the adoption would be a higher tax rate for all residential properties and a deduct, a deduction for every qualified property value before the tax is calculated at the higher tax rate. Off to the right, you can see some of the communities that have adopted the residential exemption and the percentage amount that they have adopted as well. The exemption may not exceed thirty-five percent of the average assessed value of all residential properties. So to calculate the exemption, the average assessed value of all residential properties must first be determined. The adopted percentage is applied to the average value, the assessed valuation of each residential parcel, that is, the domicile of the taxpayer, and then reduced by the amount before the bill is calculated. So the total residential value for all residential property is at twenty-two billion, one hundred eighty-seven million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. We are going to divide that by the total residential parcels of twenty-three thousand seven twenty-six, and we have an average residential value of nine hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. With that in mind, we have that amount in two thousand twenty-four, the exempt percentage was twenty-five percent. For fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, assuming the same twenty-five percent exemption value, using the same percent of twenty-five percent, it would be about a two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollar exemption for each eligible parcel. And the total of that amount that would be exempted from our levy would be, or from the total value of the twenty-two billion, would be about two billion, six hundred and eighty-seven million dollars, would be the total amount exempted from residential property. The residential exemption, the impact on residential tax rate versus no impact on the CIP rate. So if we were to maintain the residential exemption rate, the residential value is a twenty-two billion, we are going to exempt just two-point-six billion of that, so the net value being taxed is the nineteen and a half billion dollars, roughly. The residential tax levy is at the one hundred thirty-five thou, one hundred thirty-five million dollars, so that would equate out to a residential tax rate of the six dollars and ninety-four cents, where if you remember back on the first slide, without any exemption at all, it was about six dollars and ten cents per thousand. After residential exemption removes a portion of the property value subject to taxation, it results in a higher tax rate for residential classes, has the same amount of taxes our levied on this class of property, so we still have to raise the same amount of money on The break-even point, where there is no tax advantage for a primary resident with a twenty-five percent residential exemption, is one million, nine hundred thirty thousand, fifty dollars. Primary resident property owners valued above the break-even point or equal to and above the break-even point, they should still seek the exemption, although they do not benefit from it. The dollar value of a twenty-five percent exemption is one thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars. So if you look at the bar graph right here, we can go and see, the blue line is no exemption, the little orange line is with the twenty-five, a qualifying property with the twenty-five, and the gray line is an exemption that is a non-qualifying. As that goes up, we get to the break-even point, and you can see that the properties over there, there is little, or none, or sometimes even paying more, and that's due to the increased rate because of the split. So the question for the town council tonight is, we don't vote on a tax rate, we want to have you vote on a tax shift. Traditionally, it's always been a shift of one, a single tax rate, and do they, do you folks want to keep it at the twenty-five percent exemption? Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Are there members of the public that would like to be heard on this? Seeing none, could I have a motion to close the public hearing? Second, Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes, yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Thirteen yess.
Thank you. Okay, council discussion. Just to be clear, this article is specifically on the tax factor, but in the interest of saving time, Mr. Curran has, has done both this and the, the next article in his discussion, because they do work together. So certainly, I think any questions on either this or the next one would be in order, so. Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much, Vice President Tamish, and thank you for your presentation. Out of curiosity, when you reference the break-even point for the tax exemption, residential exemption.
Point of order, I, I think because we are discussing the item for the split rate, we should confine our discussion to that.
I thought he just invited both, but, fine.
Well, he, he discussed both of them in his presentation.
He did, but we are discussing one item, and I think we should confine our conversation right now to that item. He'll be here for both items to, to discuss.
All right, yeah, trying to save time, but if you'd like to separate the two, certainly. So we'll, we'll just go with the tax factor at this point, then. Any questions on the zero-five-zero, allocation of the tax factor? Counselor Ludke.
Thank you for the presentation, and I know this was before your time, and you said traditionally, we've always had the even rate. I don't know that that's accurate. I believe in two thousand and six, when we adept, we adopted the residential exemption, we had a different rate. Has anybody briefed you on that, as to what that rate was and why it was taken back to an even rate?
No.
Okay. Mr. Els, do you have any knowledge of that? No one does. Okay.
Counselor Schnep.
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I have a question. We currently have the one-to-one, and our argument is based on the fact that we're predominantly residential. So I, I understand that logic. What I question is, with our commercial properties, I know that sometimes it's a challenge to actually provide an assessed value, because the owners of those properties don't always provide the income and expense information. Could you give a percentage of what number of our commercial property owners provide the data that you need to, to actually assess their properties versus those who are willing to pay a fine?
Sure, we do send out the income and expense form every single year to all commercial property owners. I would have to look up and see what percent comes back. Off the top of my head, I would say above fifty percent, below seventy-five percent, so it's not a hundred percent compliance on that. That is one tool that we use for it. There are other tools, cost approach, sales comparison approach, income approach, that we can use in conjunction with the INEs to determine the commercial values, as well as historical data that we have in our own databases.
I've had some conversations with those who think that because the, the state only provides one mechanism for us to determine value, which is the income expense, that there are times that maybe we are getting not sufficient information to assess those properties correctly.
It could be thought of that way. You know, these aren't police, this is their information, they are supplying to us, you know, we have no way of following up. Are they collecting these rents? Are these their true expenses? But being a mass appraisal technique that we're using versus an individual appraisal technique, it is the, what the state has determined in a mass appraisal technique, the most fair and way to achieve that through the income and expense. We, we have to get the data in somehow, that's one tool that we have to get it.
Okay.
Mr. Els.
Thank you. Good evening, Mark Els. In two thousand and six, you asked that question, I just spoke with Mark Melton. It was a one-year change, and the council adopted it one year, and then the next year felt that it was not appropriate, removed it, and has gone back to one ever since. That's the extent I don't have.
Do you know what it was, Mark?
I want to say it was one-point-one-five. Yeah, one-point-one-five, I believe. But I, I didn't ask for like a, a history on that dialogue. Certainly, there must be minutes from the meetings. Yes, Lynn?
Lynn Point, Director of Community Services, but at that time, or just before that time, I was the Executive Director of the Hyannis Area Chamber of Commerce, and split tax factors work in communities where you have a higher CIP, Commercial, Industrial, Personal Property Tax, where it's twenty-five to thirty-five percent of the, of your base. Our CIP is eleven percent, and it's been eleven percent for many, many years, decades, and that was one of the reasons why it went back.
I'll let Mark Mel put a history together, though, just for future reference, certainly for John, but, you know, for you all, just so you can have a little history there.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful, because it's been so many years, and I know that John is new, so no, no need, you know, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I did want to follow up on something that Paula said. With the degree of those, and I know, John, you and I have corresponded, and, you know, I got that list of those that did not submit their INE, and it was quite extensive. The fine that's imposed, I know it was quite low, and then it was raised. Can we, as a municipality, raise that fine even more, or is that a state-mandated fine?
I believe it is a state-mandated fine, and it maxes out at two hundred and fifty dollars for commercial properties, that we can fine them for failure to return the form.
Yeah, to me, that seems quite, I think it was something like fifty dollars before, but it seems quite a, a low bar for a, a great degree of gain, as, as Paula was saying.
Yeah, I mean, this, every assessor in Massachusetts, ultimately, we answer to the DOR, so we do play by their rules. It's not like a local option where we can choose what we want to fine them on that, so we're kind of confined to what the DOR allows us on those fines.
And can I ask you, did you find this, I think you, at two other municipalities, did you find the same kind of level of failure to submit?
Um, I did, I did. Well, one of the communities had very, very little Norfolk, Massachusetts, tiny amount of commercials, so it wasn't an issue, but my most recent community, we were getting about fifty percent compliance.
Okay. Is there anything we can do as a town to advocate through our representatives to increase that fine?
If you have a good working relationship with some of the, you know, commercial property owners, you can emphasize to them how important it is to, you know, return those to us. We do have a due date on them, but we do take them after the due date if we can get them, you know, up until we're getting ready to get our value certified, we, we would accept that form, and they could avoid getting the fine. But just, we send it out, we're doing everything on our part, but, you know, we can't go and pull it out of them. They have to bring it back to us. We mail them out, we put it in front of them. If they have filled it out in years past, they should know what they're doing and fill it out. A lot of people send it, you know, larger companies to their CPA and have them fill those out. I wish there was a way, and I had an answer, to get better compliance, I don't have that answer.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Turkelson.
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. Of the, of the percentage of businesses that we fine, what's the return on those people actually paying those fines?
They do, because it's a line item right on their tax bill.
Okay.
So they do have to file.
So it's not a mechanism that we have to collect? The DOR collects it?
No, we collect it, the town collects it, yeah, and it's revenue for the town.
Okay. I've obviously filled out my form, that's why I didn't know there was a fine, so thank you.
Yeah. That's what we like to hear.
Any further discussion, any further questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, we will go to a vote. This is on twenty twenty-five zero five-zero only, the allocation of tax levy for fiscal twenty-five, the tax factor of one.
Counselors. Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to twenty twenty-five zero five-one. Counselor Neary, would you read that in, please?
My pleasure, Vice President Tamish. This is Old Business. It may be acted upon with a majority vote. It is item number twenty-dash, twenty twenty-five dash zero five-one. It's the allocation of tax levy for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, and it's the residential tax exemption as written.
Thank you. Okay, I don't know, Mr. Curran, if you have anything to add, to set.
I don't, I'm just happy to answer any questions, if anyone may have anything regarding the proposed twenty-five percent residential exemption.
Okay. Any questions on my right? Discussion? Seeing none. On my left, Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much, Vice President Tamish. Question for you, you had a beautiful graph.
You had a beautiful graph where it showed the break-even point. The screen has since changed, but you did mention that for those who are at the break-even point, that you said there's no benefit for those residents, but that they should file it anyways, and I don't understand why.
Well, it's the monetary benefit. They won't see a decrease in their tax bill like the people below that will. But when I say they should file, it's their right to file as a full-time resident. They are technically getting the residential exemption, they just don't benefit from it.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Council Letky?
I think this might be an appropriate time for Council Turkelson to continue with her question. I got the same question from the same constituent, but I'll let her bring it forward. I think it's relevant now because we had quite a few discussions last year with people looking for abatements, and there was a nice meeting between some residents and town staff that came up with some recommendations that I think were looked on favorably, and I think that's what, no, I'd have to pull it, if you have it, go ahead.
Council Turkles?
So the question that the resident had was after meeting around the assessing era that we had, that taxpayers historically haven't found out the new assessed values until they get their tax bills, which makes it extremely difficult for people desiring to put together an abatement request, to do so in less than 30 days, particularly those that work or may not get their mail right away because they're traveling for the holidays or wait for the winter. So one of the suggestions we had at that meeting was that the new assessed values be available to taxpayers as soon as possible, once approved by the state and the tax rate is approved by the town council, that the assessors have this information in order for a tax rate to be set. And that, we discussed the vision database, and along with the list of the 2023 sales, that that could be accessed online so that residents would have that information sooner rather than later. In that way, it would avoid people having to come into the assessor's office to get that information. And so the question was if the new database can be put online right away, and if the taxpayers might be able to see the new assessed values upon request right away rather than having to wait until receiving their tax bills in hand. And that was the question.
Yeah, and I totally understand that. It's not as easy as us leaving tomorrow and just sending a file to IT and then posting the values. We'll go in, we'll submit the shift factor, the residential exemption, get that approved. But in the meantime, while we're getting that approved, we have to now go in that a tax rate has been set and the exemption's been approved, we have to enter all those exemptions. So we have about three or four days' worth of work before we send it over to the tax collector. And during that time, we are working with our software vendor to have the static database created, they ship it upstairs to our IT people, they have to massage that a bit, get it in a format that can be posted on the website. So we are shooting to get it up there as early as possible. It's been a project that, I guess, started last year, and we wanted to make sure that we could get it out there early. It does, I see the advantage, gives them more time to prepare if they want to file an abatement. But nothing would change before, they'd still have to go through an abatement, you know, if they disagree with the value, it's not the time to contest it. Where next year, during our revale year, we have the public comment period where we're going to do a five-year annual full-town revaluation. Those values will get posted ahead of time for public to look at, and we'll have more options. But we are trying to work to get those database and all that online information out as quickly as possible.
And when do you think, like, the soonest?
Probably going to be about January 1st. We just were talking about it today. It will be there about January 1st.
And the abatements need to be filed by?
February 1st.
February 1st.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And they can always call. I prefer a conversation with any resident that has an abatement before they file. I would prefer to have a conversation with them. I find a lot of people, when I can explain the assessment cycle to them, how the calendar works, what year, what data we're looking at, some people, they might have a little sticker shock at the value that they've had, but they'll understand it, and after seeing sales in their neighborhood, they'll be a lot more clear. And they may still decide to file, but they'll be a lot more clear, and sometimes it might help them file the application with the benefit of a discussion with us.
And so a resident could call sooner than January 1st to see if the assessed value is available through your office?
As soon as we're certified by the state, yeah. Well, I wouldn't say tomorrow, but in a couple of days, once we get this into the state. My big fear is I don't want to give any information, have the state come back and change one little thing on us. So, yeah, they could give a call, and if, you know, verbally give it to us, swing by Town Hall, we like the company, come on by, we'll answer any questions they have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? On my left? Seeing none? Okay. The vote is on the resolution. Town Council hereby votes to adopt a residential exemption of 25% for fiscal year 2025. Okay? Madam Clark?
Councilors, Schnepp?
Yes.
Bloom, I'm sorry, Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Ludkey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Curran.
Thank you, Councilor.
Take care. Councilor Clark, could you introduce 2025-054?
With pleasure, Vice President Tamish. Item number 2025-054, this is old business which may be acted upon with a majority vote. That is Authorization of a Housing Development Incentive Program Tax Increment Exemption Agreement between the Town of Barnstable and Crocker Street Holdings, LLC, for eight new market-rate residential rental units located at 24 and 30 Crocker Street, Hyannis, Mass.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay. Okay. Rationale, I recognize Jim Cupfer, Planning and Development.
Good evening, Jim Cupfer, Director of Planning and Development. Tonight, we are seeking authorization of the Housing Development Incentive Program Tax Increment Exemption Agreement between the Town of Barnstable and Crocker Street Holdings, LLC, for eight new market-rate residential rental units located at 24 and 30 Crocker Street here in Hyannis. The Tax Incentive Committee, which is a subcommittee of the town council, recommends approval of the Housing Development Incentive Program Tax Increment Exemption Request from the developer at this location, again, for eight market-rate units. The TIE agreement is a contract between the property owner and the municipality, which sets forth the amount of tax exemption and duration of the benefit. The sponsor has requested, and again, the Tax Incentives Committee, a subcommittee of the council, recommends 100% tax exemption for years 1 through 5, and 85% tax exemption for years 6 through 15, and 60% tax exemption for years 16 through 20, an increased value anticipated to be $2,399,200. If approved by the town, this project and the TIE agreement must also be approved by the State Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council discussion on my right? Council Schnepp?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish, and thank you, Jim. I'm going to have a few questions that apply to this project, but also to the other two. They're more general questions about the H-DIP. And just over a year ago, we had three proposals that came before us, and I asked similar but slightly different questions. And tonight, I want to kind of address the actual exemptions that have been requested and compare them to what other H-DIP communities in Massachusetts have awarded, just to kind of bring some context to what is being put forth tonight. H-DIP is available to communities that are considered gateway, and so there's certain characteristics of a gateway community in terms of population, poverty levels, other economic criteria, and it really came about as a way to incentivize development, especially in areas where that was needed, you know, so redevelopment. And I think, you know, we've definitely prioritized that as a town. Other towns in Massachusetts, Pittsfield, Chelsea, Lowell, Worcester, Springfield, Haverville, Brockton, Holyoke, Quincy, and Lynn, have all gone through these processes. And what is striking is sort of the difference in terms of the exemptions that they've awarded. And so I just wanted to give you some very basic statistics of what other communities have provided. Only seven, there were 56 projects that I looked at that were, have been completed. This is probably, you know, one or two years old. And of those, only 7% of those exemption agreements were for 20 years. So I guess other communities felt that they wanted to front-load it, but they didn't need to provide that exemption, you know, past year 10. Only 25% started with 100% exemption. So many of them didn't even start at 100. And in fact, one of our first projects that we approved a couple of years ago started 85%. So it's not necessary that we start at 100. And of those, that, of those 25%, only a fifth of those, or 20%, had 100% for more than a year. So in some cases, they just had 100% for one year, and that was done. So I'm very much in favor of what this program has provided us, and as we referenced Jim's report earlier, we've had a lot of success. But I'm concerned that out of the gate, we didn't take complete responsibility, and I'm looking at us, the council, in formulating criteria for how we were going to award these exemptions. And, you know, maybe we thought our subcommittee should do that, and it's nothing to the three that are currently sitting on it, but when we created this program, it was sort of open-ended in terms of what these exemptions were. And for whatever reason, we kind of allowed the developers to come to us versus us setting the criteria. So I'm a little concerned that our exemptions have gotten pretty expensive. And when I say expensive, what we're basically doing is even though we're exempting the taxes from those who are going to be receiving them, the increase in our tax base is still going up. So in effect, those taxes are being spread among us. Again, that's a policy choice. I'm not saying that's a good or bad thing, but that's the result. If somebody over here gets the, just like we just passed on our residential exemption, we've decided as a policy that year-round residents are going to pay less in taxes than our second homeowners. And, you know, I think we all come to that conclusion from different perspectives, but we've agreed on that for a number of years. Basically, when we're approving these ties, we're basically shifting the taxes from these new developments onto the rest of us. So that makes me pause on whether, you know, whether we've been thoughtful enough in terms of how we've set this up. Because basically, what's happened is now we have precedent, so that every single project that's going to come before us is going to be minimum 5, you know, five years 100%, five years 85, whatever it is, and up to 20. No one's going to ask for anything less than that. Why would you? So I'm not going to telegraph my votes individually here, but if I'm not in favor of these projects as presented, it's not because I don't agree with the overall project, I'm just not sure that these are the rates that we should be setting going forward. And I would welcome, if we don't approve them tonight, to have them come back with maybe some slight adjustments that may be based on what the rest of the state's doing and what makes the most sense for us. We've been very successful in creating new housing. So maybe we can bring it down a little bit so that it is fair. So, thank you.
Council Letky?
I had a question for Council Schnepp. When you looked at these comparison projects, what were the size, the scale of them? This one's very small. Are you looking?
They were all different sizes.
All different sizes?
Absolutely.
What did you see, ones that were of comparable size?
Yes.
Same data?
Yes. Yes, it really, it was more determined by the community and how they were, you know, putting forth their program. And I think, I think most elected bodies probably convened a committee that decided, you know, how they were going to, you know, if they were going to have standard rates or if they were going to evaluate each project based on its financial feasibility. That's another criteria. In fact, most projects that come before the Affordable Housing Trust, you know, you're supposed to sort of show there's a gap, and that the trust money is going to fill the gap. I believe Jim said, I think in a conversation, that that's not a necessity for this program, that it can be just a overall incentive for you to come forward with projects, and it doesn't have to actually financially be necessary. But I think some communities do sort of put that in there, that, you know, in order to make the cash flow work, if they can reduce the tax burden, especially in the early years where there's a lot more uncertainty. But, you know, we're looking at a rental market, and one of these projects, not the one that we're talking about initially, has fairly substantial rents. And there have been some critiques of the H-DIP program, primarily from affordable housing advocates, that there's been a bit of a tilt toward market rate and luxury housing versus affordable. And again, I don't want to get into that whole conversation, I don't. But to your point, yes, they were considering all-size projects and not just small ones.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Anyone on my left? Council Clark?
Thank you very much, Vice President Tamish. If I may ask the Chair of the TIE Committee about the evaluation process you went through to make this recommendation, please.
Well, I will say, and I happen to agree with Council Schnepp, is that we weren't given exactly a precedent to go by prior to our making these decisions, and we've, I will say, we've discussed that, at what point are we being too generous or not generous enough? And, but the rest of, I think I can speak for all the rest of us on that committee, the other two, that we were wrestling with that concept because we didn't have a baseline to proceed with in the first place. So I think the information you're giving us is very important. I'd like to see maybe a little bit more as Counselor Letky was saying, where does, what is the average and customary level is? And I don't think we're provided with that. So we were sort of, at this point, sort of flying blind without a baseline of knowledge. So I would, I'll just say that's where we are. So that is your question.
Thank you. Council Clark?
And I very much appreciate all that evaluation that Counsel Schnepp brought to our discussion. As I mull this over, it does strike me that perhaps, although you mentioned these communities, that they're not, they're not necessarily comparable, and that we are a resort community that has a different level of home costs or average home costs, as we saw with the assessor's presentation. And maybe it's not necessarily comparable to look at the average cost of establishing affordable housing or housing in Barnstable as it is in Holyoke, near where I grew up, and I understand the context of the value of the homes there. So this may be worthy of a study. I thank you for bringing that forward. And it also might be helpful for us to hear from the petitioner, who's the beneficiary here, and to understand the consequences to the developer of this particular proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? On my right?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I would agree with Counselor Schnepp. I, you know, when I started learning about this, it seemed odd to me that we would give a tax exemption for 20 years. It's a long time. It's a long time, especially at a property that's probably devaluing itself over time, and we're giving it more and more incentives, it seems. I mean, it kind of feels like baseball, when we give a contract to somebody for 10 years with $150 million, and they make it for one inning, and then they hurt their elbow, and that's them. So I mean, that's probably not a great analogy, but I guess it just seems like 20 years is an extensive period of time. And especially depending on the makeup of market rate to affordable housing, the profitability of that project in this environment where we know that we have a housing crisis, there's probably not a chance that these units will be vacant for long. So I'm kind of of the mind that I think we are not within the norm. And I think that that's unfortunate, because it does shift the responsibility onto our residents, who will be paying the tax levy on that. We still have to raise the money somehow, and it's coming from our residents. And I don't know if our residents realize that, and how they would feel about that, that we're creating more and more market-rate apartments and providing homes. I understand that, but we're also making others pay for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Neri?
Just as a follow-up, and Counselor Schnep is correct, and both Counselor Crowe and Vice President Tamish, precedent is the, that's the exact word. These came to us basically following the prior formats. And there was discussion during the meetings, frankly, on the term. The term was something that is, I'll be lucky if I'm around in 20 years. So you know, just kind of, if you kind of put that into your mental thoughts, these are long agreements. So with that said, I don't know, is there a, is there a opinion or maybe an idea to possibly amend these? It's completely up to my fellow counselors, but I can tell you precedent is really what established what you're seeing here in these agreements.
Thank you. Go ahead, Joe. Counsel Bloom?
If we vote no, does the committee go back to the drawing board?
So you can certainly, the subcommittee can certainly reconsider, you know, an application. The sponsor is here, though, and he might be able to speak to timing of those applications. It does need to go to the state, and I do know they have certain deadlines that you may want to consider.
If I might speak as a member of the committee, we did have discussions among ourselves, being new on the committee, about what was appropriate and what was inappropriate. So I, myself, speaking for me personally, went back and looked at some of the prior agreements that had been voted on in prior years. And the ones that you have in front of you were consistent with those. We did have discussions on some of them. There were changes made in some of the requests that the proponents had brought forward. The issue I have at this point with changing them is that all three proponents have come to the committee. The committee has approved them, perhaps. We could have used other criteria, but we didn't have other criteria at that time. We looked at what the past, what the prior town council committees had done, and what the council had voted on, and that's what we used for our basis to approve these agreements. The proponents all have timelines as far as state funding for various grants, various housing grants, which, you know, may or may not be somewhat flexible. So I would ask that if changes are going to be made, that we as a council perhaps have a workshop for the future. But the goal of these agreements are to provide housing. And you're going to see some great projects going forward for housing, and I think they should go through, this group go through as we have approved them, and perhaps have a workshop so we can discuss what we want to do for the future. But I think there's been a tremendous amount of work done by the proponents, and I think we should respect that in these three cases.
Counsel Starr?
Thank you. I think in light of how we, how our formulas are developed, we've been working on precedent, but it seems like precedent is far from the norm in terms of other towns and other places around the Commonwealth. I think we need to look at percentages, and I think we need to look at, you know, how long a time we want to give tax breaks to. I would make a motion to postpone this, send it back to the Thai Committee, and have them come back at the next town council meeting in a month, and give us their assessment of what clear guidelines we should be using.
Order. Tell them it's out of the woods. Counselor Penn?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say that the Thai agreements that are being presented here tonight are consistent with everything that this town's done since we voted the H-DIP program in. The whole purpose of H-DIP is basically to gentrify socio-economically deprived neighborhoods, okay? Which is exactly what these do. If you look at the rents they're charging, they're anything but affordable, but they are market rate, and good for them. And it's also helpful to the smaller developer, who are mostly local, which is who we want to deal with and who we want to support. I mean, I don't want people coming from over the bridge telling us what they want to do. I feel very strongly that you can't change the rules in the middle of the process. I mean, we've been doing this program on this percentage base for years. All of a sudden, everybody says, oh, that spreads it out to the rest of us. Well, no kidding. It's been doing that since the beginning. There's nothing new here. So to discuss the philosophy of what exemption in what years you guys are willing to do, that's a lovely conversation, but I don't think it's fair to take these projects that have already made it its old business. I don't think it's fair to do that to these projects here, because there's eight units on one, and 41 on another, and 85 on another. I think if you want to change the rules in the middle of the process, then you have to declare a moratorium or something or other, and say, and don't accept any applications for a while, have the philosophical discussion then, and then come up with a framework. But that's not fair to do to these projects right here, now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Schnep?
Thank you. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the August meeting when the most recent Thai agreement was presented. And prior to that, the last ones were in November of 2023. So I would have brought up these arguments at that point in time. It's been of concern, and I know that, you know, any time you bring these things up, it's not a good time, you know, because you've gotten so far in the process. But a lot of times, we don't know about them until they get on the agenda, and that's when we have to respond. So I'm not sure how everybody wants to proceed tonight. I understand there are timelines, that most of these projects are interested in getting the state housing credits. I don't know if there's a deadline for that application. Do you have that deadline?
There is. I don't know, Jake, do you want to speak to this?
Jake Dewey, developer. It's very, very soon. It's literally a week away for this round of funding. There will be other rounds of funding, but it probably would, I can't speak to other projects, but probably would push the project out a year if we don't go forward tonight. One thing that I did want to add, if I may, fire tax in our town is a separate tax and is not subject to the exemption. So the fire tax will be in full rate and will continue to be whatever the fire department sets it. The H-DIP zone is all Hyannis, so it's all Hyannis fire tax. And then one other thing for my project was, by me initiating this project, we did get a grant from the state that you all accepted for the water line improvement. That was because I committed to doing this project that we were able to get that grant.
Jake, I hate to put you on the spot, but, and you're not, you're just speaking for your project. I mean, if we were, I mean, because I think we should make an up or down vote tonight. If we were going to do any type of amendment, what could you live with?
I mean, again, with the length thing, for me as a local landlord, I intend on having these projects for the long term. I think if we shorten it, it would change my perspective of holding it for the long term. If we bring it down to five years, it's probably a five-year and let it go. I mean, the way public comment went with the residential exemption, I would have spoken to how hard the residential exemption, the residential exemption is for year-round property owners, not year-round residents. The tax bills are the hardest part of year-round rentals and providing year-round rentals. You know, our tax bills on, like, big projects, we can absorb if we're at four, six, eight units, but I'm just saying, you know, the tax bill is a significant part of the expense, and the insurance is becoming a significant part of the expense, that we have to assume is going to just keep going that way. But I will listen to any proposal you guys have. I can't promise that it means the project will go forward.
I mean, assuming if you sell it in five years, you're going to sell it for a capital gain. So you're not, otherwise you'd hold on to it, probably.
Well, if it's, if the expenses are creeping up on the rents, you know, you have to make a decision.
And I don't want to get into all that right now.
Yeah, and I will add that the agreement is also to have these be, they are restricted as year-round rentals for the period. So again, if we shorten that, it creates more opportunity. I've heard of other developers when, in other towns that are taking five-year agreements, in five years, they condoize them and sell them off, or they turn them into short-term rentals, and they set them up that way. I'm not building things without spec, so I don't see my project ever going that way. But it is, part of the deal is that you are committing to making these year-round rentals for the time period that you all choose. So it's just something to consider.
Counsel Leuckey?
I think Jake makes a very good point that I'll reiterate. When he rents these apartments, he doesn't get the residential exemption, even though he's doing them to year-round people. He pays at the higher rate. And I think that's really important to recognize when he's not, doesn't have that many units here. I tend to agree with what Vice President Tamish and President Penn said. I think we should approve these. I'm in complete support of them. I like our local builders. I like these smaller projects, and I think it's important. I think we've used this tool well. Again, as I said earlier, I'm on the housing subcommittee. I read a lot of reports from other towns. And based on Jim's report, we're really doing good things. We're moving out smartly where other towns aren't quite. And could I ask Jim, are there any other gateway cities on Cape Cod?
No, I don't believe there's any other gateway cities on Cape Cod, so we are.
So that goes to Counselor Clark's point, which I thought was very good, was that we're in a seasonal community with outrageous property values, and we need these market rates. It's a good mix. This is a market rate program. We use our housing trust fund for the affordable piece, and it works together. And I'm ready to vote absolutely to support this project.
Thank you. Counsel Crowe?
Having chaired these meetings, I think these projects are worth going forward, and I think changing the, we may have been over generous here, and I'll say that right away. But I think we made, we made a deal with these developers at the table. I think if we're going to reassess it, we should do so after these projects and just live and learn and go that direction. I think it's unfair for us to, with the deadlines, they're all working hard to get their projects started, and I think they're all worthwhile projects. I think we can, we can say, okay, after these particular ones we have here, we should go back and decide what our baselines are for tax exemptions and go from there. I think that's the fairest thing we could do tonight.
Thank you. Counsel Clark?
Thank you. And I thank Counselor Schnep for triggering this discussion that I think will be helpful going forward. I do want to mention that I took the time to look at the properties that were proposed to us last November, and Developer Dewey was one of them in November 2023 as well. So it's actually on the website that the property at, I believe this was 50 Yarmouth Road, now looks like this. And in a space of a year, due to the tax, the Thai agreement, that neglected properties were able to get revitalized. And quite frankly, I'm happy you did that, and more developers are doing so to make Barnstable a better place. So I will support this, and will also support a review of a comprehensive strategy going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Anyone on my right? We will go for a vote. Counsel Clark?
Counselors Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
No.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdeck?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Leuckey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Based on the upcoming deadlines for these projects, I will yes.
That passes 12 yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And Paul, I would love to work with you to look at land costs and all that stuff and say, like, how should we work? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crowe, could you do?
I have a question.
You're sorry?
I was going to recuse myself, but you can go first.
Was the vote 12 yes?
Yes, it was. 12, excuse me, 1.
It wasn't 12 yes.
12 to 1.
It was, it was, it was 1, 1 no.
Counsel Turkelson, I believe it was 1. Turkelson was the only one, I believe, right? Yeah. Yes.
But I'm going to recuse myself. I have to disclose a business relationship with this applicant.
Okay.
Though I did participate in the vote to move this forward, I will not be deliberating on it.
Is that acceptable? Thank you.
Okay, this is an item of old business. It may be acted upon by a majority vote. It's 2025-0-055. It's an authorization of a housing development incentive program tax increment exemption agreement between the Town of Barnstable and Spartan Cleaners Realty LLC for 41 new market-rate residential rental units located at 242 Barnstable Road, Hyannis.
Second.
Is he recusing himself? Counsel Mendez, are you? Just hanging on one second, Jim. All set?
I'm sorry, I need to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Let's see. Mr. Cupfer, your rationale, please.
Excellent, thank you. Jim Cupfer, Director of Planning. This is seeking authorization of a housing development incentive program tax increment exemption agreement between the Town of Barnstable and Spartan Cleaners for 41 new market-rate residential rental units at 242 Barnstable Road. The Tax Incentive Committee of the Town Council recommends approval of this exemption request from the developer at 242 Barnstable Road, 41 market-rate units. Five units are proposed to be permanently deed-restricted and affordable. The project has a total of 46 units. The Thai agreement is a contract between the property owner and The tie agreement is a contract between the property owner and the municipality, which sets forth the amount of tax exemption and duration of the benefits. The sponsor has requested, and the Tax Incentive Committee recommends, 100% tax exemption for one, years one through five, 85% tax exemption for years six through 10, and 55% tax exemption on years 11 through 20, on increased value anticipated to be $6,422,466, which excludes the value of the five affordable units. Again, if approved by the town, this project and the tie agreement must also be approved by the State Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on my right? Counselor?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. Jim, I believe that in addition to the five affordable units under our local, what do we call that?
Inclusionary.
A lip? No, not the lip. Inclusionary zoning, that we have four units that are now receiving funding from the Affordable Housing Trust.
That's correct.
So, where does that fit in here? Are they considered market rate?
Yes. 100%.
So, workforce, the workforce housing category. So, it's not on our subsidized housing inventory, it wouldn't be designated as affordable technically.
On your inventory, those are included as affordable. So, just, just...
Inventory of, I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you...
The, the big report that we referenced earlier in the report, all the 100% AMIs are, are part of the total affordable units.
I see. Okay.
So, so the 100% AMI merit an additional subsidy, but they're not considered market rate. They are considered market rate. Because they're going to be different rents than his market rate rents.
Yes, understood. So, no, they wouldn't be considered market rate, they wouldn't be considered affordable. They're the category in between the workforce housing category that the state determines.
But for purposes of the tax...
Right.
...exemption, they're not part of, they're part, they're...
Community housing? Affordable, 100, 220, 200?
Yeah, you should come up and speak to it.
Just, just to answer your question, that...
Okay, if you could just introduce yourself, please.
I'm Steve Cleary with Autonomous CRE, we're the consultant to Tammy and Josh Barrows, who own Spartan Cleaners. And 100% to 120% of area median income is technically classified as affordable. The problem that we have is there isn't this huge base of residents here that can afford either. We're going to get the crap kicked out of us. It's a difficult hoe at market in this town. Wind coming online about the same time as us with investment tax credits through the roof. That's an $86 million project that needs $9 million in debt. We're a $15 million project that needs $15 million in debt. What you guys do for us, especially on the front end, which you could think about, you help us get our coverage ratios, so if we can bring our taxes down, it brings our ratios up, which makes the project a lot more bankable. Now, as those years go along, and our rents are just ticking up slowly, we can afford to cover more, and it keeps our coverage ratios at the same level. Another thing is our, if we're doing a bank loan based on cost, which is a value, if we can lower an expense before the NOI, which would be taxes, we create more value, which gives us more opportunity to borrow enough money to get these deals done. That's what makes this so important. And we're having our market studies coming in right now. I'm getting nervous. You can hear me. 850 is 12% vacancy rate. Hanover's 12.6% vacancy rate. It's because that demand for affordable, affordable housing on the Cape is huge market. The people don't make the money. 100% AMI, when you're based on 100% AMI of like 135,000, 30% of 135,000, a lot of money. And there aren't a lot of people here that can afford those rents. Would we look at it a different way, if you guys didn't have the great programs like this with the Affordable Housing Trust? Yeah, we'd take the time to go the wind route. That's the only way to go. But the H-DIP also brings in, says, here's an incentive to bring market housing to Barnstable. And that's what we chose to do, that's what the Barrows chose to do. They've been operating Spartan Cleaners now for four years. Josh owns J&amp;V Septic. He's a great excavator, they're really hard-working people. They're, they're emerging developers that this Barnstable County as a whole needs, is the smaller residents creating housing. And that's what you see on this whole group of people. Everybody's from here. Josh is not going away. Tammy's not going away. He, he shows up on that site with this huge smile on his face. He's creating housing for his friends, family, and neighbors. And I, I love the program, I love working with this town. I've never seen more incredible people, from Gillian to Josh to Corey. They're just so open, and I've been everywhere. And it's just a great, great place to work. So, that's, that's my story, and I agree that, okay.
So, could I, could I just follow?
Thank you for that.
Could I follow up? Because I don't think my question was answered, so. I, the program gives the tax credits exemption to the market rate units, so I need a definitive answer if these four units are classified as market rate for purposes of this program. Might not be a question you can answer.
Definitely, because...
I think, actually, maybe Mark Mill needs to answer that question.
In the H-DIP, you kind of have more than 20% affordable. They won't give you the H-DIP.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're, you're at nine units, five at 65, and four at 100%. But for the calculation of the tax credits, I need to know if those four need to be backed out of that, of a number. So, that, that's just a math question, I don't know what the answer is.
Filing that with the state as market rate?
Yeah.
You are filing that with the state as market rate?
They, the filing actually calls it affordable.
Calls it affordable?
Yeah. And it has to stay at 20. It's like 19.4. That's why we can only do four units with affordable housing. If we did five, we'd break it up. Over 20.
Okay. Did, did you get your answer, Counselor?
I don't think anyone's given you the answer yet. I don't. The, the calculation of the tax exemption is based on the number of market rate units. And this, I don't even, how many total units are at this project?
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Okay. So, we're, we're calling those 100% AMI units a market rate?
Correct.
So, not only are we, are we giving you a tax incremental exemption on those units, we're giving you $100,000 per unit for those units by the trust?
Four units, correct.
And the state's okay with those being called market rate?
Yes. Affordable calls it community housing, I believe. They don't call it affordable, they call it community housing?
All set, Counselor?
Oh.
Okay. Before you leave, one, one of the most interesting aspects of this project, could you just discuss briefly the energy use?
It's going to be close to zero energy use. It's a net zero fossil-free building, 100% self-generation. It'll be a microgrid, battery storage, tenant will control everything. So, we do, we, we create, it's going to be built by robots in a closed environment. Everything will be trucked to the site. We're hoping to create a little satellite factory down here on the Cape to create the housing, because a lot of the ADUs are big right now, and it's a company called Reframe that's been in, in town talking to people, so. So, we have an agreement with Reframe Systems, Reframe dot systems, if you want to take a look. And one of the issues right now is creating larger buildings. They've created a net zero ADU in Arlington for the housing fund there. They're creating some triple deckers in Cambridge right now that are 100% net zero. Moving on to us is going to be more of a challenge, and it's in design right now. So, like, we have property in Yarmouth, that we're going to try a six-unit building there, and we're going to try an eight-unit building there, rather than a 23-unit building that we initially planned there. And it's going to make it a lot easier, it's going to have more of a village feel to it. And we'd like to see and even work with the town where we have these three, we call it a Cape Cod walk-up, which is a three-story, basically a triple-decker, where we could, we could do a triple-decker inexpensively, we could charge lower rents, if we can just find smaller pieces of land that are zoned to put these on. It's pretty exciting to, well, if you put stairwells in between, you can create six units of walk-up, rather than these big, well, the buildings here, 102 by 60, 104 by 62, and these are like 51 by 40.
All right, thank you. Oh, excuse me. One, Counselor Lutke?
Yeah, just wanted to ask one thing. You said you seemed somewhat alarmed by it, that both Hanover and residences at 850 have the 12% vacancy rate. What, what makes you think you'll be able to achieve a better rate than that?
I don't think we will, that's what I'm alarmed by.
Is 12% alarming? What is the rate that's desired?
I'm running my numbers at five. People tell me Cape Cod is seven, and 12 would be, I probably wouldn't be able to pay the bills.
So...
And might be why 850 is for sale.
So, but, so you think, I mean, I'm just concerned that you, is there anything you, you're, I mean, I love your net zero, this kind of thing. Is there, is there anything that makes you think you're going to be better than, than the 12?
I'm going to be less expensive to operate.
Okay.
So, I'll have the same rent, but hopefully I have different expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Take me through.
Thank you. Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I appreciate your explanation of the finances and, and the tax incentives and how that helps you afford building this project. Can you explain to me, you're going to be getting 100% tax exemption for years one to five. Part of what I think you said was, you need the tax exemption on the front end to be able to have the expense down so that you can go to the bank to secure the money.
Right.
Did I get that right?
Correct.
So, if, and I'm not asking about this project, but if in theory, a tax exemption was 100% for, say, the first year, and 90% year two, and, and going by decreasing percentages, does that impact your ability to have the financing you need on day one, as you do at the beginning? Because it sounds like you need the money on the front end, so I'm just trying to understand, how far out do you really need that money that we would need to keep this tax exemption so high for so long? I might not be making myself clear.
Yeah, I think that, as I sat here listening, we did exactly what you guys said. We, we, we looked at what they did last year, and we repeated it. And I didn't even add it into the financials, whether we get it or not. It's more important for us to have the support of the town, which tells the state that you support our project. And, and the state to us is probably $2 million. That's huge to, to say, do we do it or we don't do it? And without you guys, if he said no tonight, our deal would have been done. It would have been dead. Because Tammy and Josh don't have $2 million to, to fill that gap. The Town of Barnstable saying, through the Affordable Housing Trust, we fully support what they're doing, through the tie agreement, we fully support what they're doing, says to the state, and it's, it's a grant, that, that people like the project, people support the projects, people support market rate housing, people support what Josh and Tammy want to do at 242 Barnstable Road. And I think that you can't have two better, this gentleman before me seems awesome as well, local. You kind of have two better people than Josh and Tammy to decide to take a huge risk to do a development here. Josh bought that property to park his excavation trucks, and then he came to this, to the town, and they said, you can't do that, Josh. And he's like, well, what's the plan B? And then everything started happening in town, and he, he developed, he developed real estate, but he usually buys stuff and improves it. And now he wants to put his own shovels in the ground and build up, so.
So, would a 10, would a 10-year term, I guess I'm asking you in theory, is a 10-year term something that still proves to the state, then, that we support the project? I'm not saying for this project.
Yeah, and I should...
I guess I'm just asking in theory, because like Paula said, it's, we're, we're outside of the norm. So, I'm just curious if, if, you know, I'm, I don't, I don't want to not support the project or not have development.
Right.
I guess I'm just curious, if we had a 10-year term, it still shows evidence that we're supporting the project? I mean, it doesn't sound like a 20-year term is a requirement for that.
A 10-year, a three-year term, a bank would probably have an issue with, because they want to see that this is five to 10 years. 10 years from now, as you said, I'm not going to be here. Yeah. I know Josh and Tammy are going to be here, they're young. A bank wants to see stability. I contrast the both things, and if I'm coming along with my gross rental income, and my expenses are going at that level, and I keep going up and up, and the expenses are staying relatively the same, or going up 2.5% and rent's going up 3%, yeah, we can take that hit in, in the 10th year. Yeah.
Any other questions? Left, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clark?
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
I'm a no, not because I don't want the project again, I just want us to look at the tie in particular.
Bloom?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
I'm voting no this time, because I'm concerned that the MM or MRRUs might be not correctly calculated, and our tax exemption might not be correctly calculated, so.
Starr?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. Vice President? 25-056, Counselor Neary will be...
I need to recuse myself from 20-25-056. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bloom, could you read in 20-25-056, please?
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
Excuse me. Oh, Counselor Burdick?
Right.
I believe so, is stuff still here? Two.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we've got him.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Counselor Burdick has returned to the dais. And Counselor Bloom, please.
Certainly. This is old business, it may be acted upon by a majority vote. This is item 2025-056, authorization of a housing development incentive program tax increment exemption agreement between the Town of Barnstable and Hyannis Harbor LLC for 85 new market rate residential rental units located at 201 Main Street in Hyannis.
Second.
Second. All right. I recognize Mr. Cupfer, Director of Planning and Development.
Good evening. Jim Cupfer, Director of Planning and Development. Tonight, we're here, the sponsor is seeking authorization of a housing development incentive program tax increment exemption agreement between the Town of Barnstable and Hyannis Harbor LLC for 85 new market rate residential rental units located at 201 Main Street in Hyannis.
Second.
Second. All right. I recognize Mr. Cupfer, Director of Planning and Development.
Good evening. Jim Cupfer, Director of Planning and Development. Tonight, we're here, the sponsor is seeking authorization of a housing development incentive program tax increment exemption agreement between the Town of Barnstable and Hyannis Harbor LLC. 85 market rate residential rental units are going to, are to be located at 201 Main Street. The Tax Incentive Committee, a Subcommittee of the Town Council, recommends approval of the housing development incentive program tax increment exemption requests between
In addition to the 85 market rate units, 10 units are proposed to be permanently de-districted and affordable. The project has a total of 95 units. The tie agreement is a contract between the property owner and the municipality, which sets forth the amount of tax exemption and duration of the benefit the sponsor has requested, and the Tax Incentive Committee recommends 100% tax exemption for years one through five, and 85% tax exemption for years six through 10, and 55% tax exemption from years 11 through 20. On increased value anticipated to be $12,621,864, which excludes the value of the 10 affordable units. Again, if approved by the town, this project and tie agreement must be approved by the State Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on my right? Any discussion on my left? Seeing none? Counselor Starr, or Counselor President Penn? No? Okay. Madam, Counselor Clark?
Sorry about that. I'm trying to scramble to figure out the percentage. What is the percentage of affordable units in this project?
It's 10% per the inclusionary housing ordinance.
So are we ever going to contemplate going over 10%?
You mean, townwide? Not in the foreseeable future, but we can have that discussion at a later date.
Thank you. I think we need to do so.
Any further discussion? Madam Clark?
Counselors. Turkelson?
No, same reason.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Lutke? Neary, Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you. Congratulations to all three of you. Counselor Lutke, could you do 2025-059, please?
Yes.
Counselor Neary is returning to the dais.
This is new business, it may be acted upon by a majority vote. 2025-059, Authorization to Contract For and Expand a Fiscal Year 2025 Municipal Local Cybersecurity State-Matching Grant in the Amount of $17,743.75 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grants and Research for Cybersecurity Improvements.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Benoit?
Hello, Jim Benoit, Director of Information Technology. Back in August 2024, the town was awarded a grant, a cybersecurity grant from the Commonwealth of the amount of $70,975, to make several cybersecurity improvements at the town. Although the grant was distributed by the Commonwealth, the funding source was actually the federal government. The Commonwealth is now awarding the town with an additional matching grant in the amount of $17,743.75 to supplement the federal funds that have already been awarded. These funds will be used, along with a previous grant, to implement several cybersecurity improvements across the town, police, and school department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on my right? Any questions on my left? Any further discussion? Seeing none on Zoom either? Madam Clark?
Counselors. Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Jim. Counselor Turkelson, could you read in 2025-060, please?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. This is an item of new business, it's a first read referring to the planning board, item 2025-060, Amending the Code of the Town of Barnstable, Part 1, General Ordinances, Chapter 240, Zoning, to revise the definition of accessory dwelling unit, ADU, and to revise use and dimensional requirements, floor area definition, and clarify parking restrictions, and no owner occupancy requirements for ADUs as written.
Second.
Thank you, second. Okay, this is just a referral to the planning board? Any discussion? Okay, Madam Clark?
Counselors. Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crow?
No.
No. Levec?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
I'm voting no, because I have some questions about this.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you. Okay, now turn over the meeting to the town clerk for the nomination of 2025 officers.
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. The rules for this evening, in order for names to be placed in nomination, I'll need a motion to nominate in a second, excuse me. Discussions and speeches are not appropriate for this evening, but will be welcomed for the next evening, which will be the next meeting. At this time, we're just creating a slate of nominees. Are there any questions? Okay, so the floor is open. Mr. Neary.
Thank you. Thank you, madam.
Not until the next meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clark. I would like to make a motion to place Precinct 10 Counselor Levec to the office of the President.
Is there a second?
I'd like to nominate Counselor Burdick for Vice President.
Can we stop with just President for now?
Geez, you don't have to yell at me.
Yes, I nominate Craig Tamish for the presidency.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Burdick for Vice President, please.
I would like to nominate Counselor Chris Clark for Vice President.
Hello, I would like to nominate Mr. Levec for Vice President.
Am I not loud enough?
No.
I declare them closed now for, until our next meeting, on the 12th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion adjourned? Second. Roll call vote on the motion to adjourn.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crow?
Absolutely.
Levec?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, we are adjourned.